Thirty, we'll call this morning's meeting to order. Our first item is the approval of the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried, decisions to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard this morning on items not on the agenda? Any citizens comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the bills and vouchers.
So.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried. We have minutes from the past two weeks, we have June 6th and the 13th.
Move to approve.
And we have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried. All right, our eight thirty-five item, it's public health, and we have a few things with Kathy.
Good morning.
So you have a request to increase school health services for Holly.
Yes, we previously have had a holy school contract, but as you can see from the information I sent, it was very part-time. They're looking for now thirty-five hours a week, so technically a full-time school nurse. So that's what the contract states. I've been in conversation with the superintendent out there. So we would need to find a nurse that can provide that school nursing because the contract is really just very part-time before, so we could fill in. But now we'll need to advertise, we would probably do that internally first to see if there's any interest.
So your request was do that and then they backfill if that?
Backfill the other position, correct. And that thirty-five hours a week is an odd number, but our DGF school also has a contract for thirty-five hours a week. So the school nurse would really be a thirty-two hour a week position, a point eight.
Okay.
And then would, you know, flex the few hours and use those on school out days, and then we'd use that person in the summer as well for some fill-in for vacations and other things here, so.
So the school pays for the months the school's open?
Correct.
And then the summer, sorry?
The summer would cover, we could cover the juvenile detention nurse for vacations, we can cover the clinic, we can cover some summer duties that we have in the summer for a nurse.
So that would already be in your budget then?
Correct, that's correct. This would be, yeah, thirty-two hours a week where the school's paying for that school time and then we're covering the rest for the duties that public health needs.
I just want to clarify, the stuff that's not the school is not additional or it is additional or it's already budgeted?
It's already budgeted, correct. It will, it will be budgeted in our twenty-eight teen budget because we didn't have the full-time.
So it'll be a new request for eighteen?
It'll be, well, but the school year starts, the school year starts this fall, the fall of twenty-seventeen, so we need to provide that school nurse at the beginning of the school. So in the fall, school is in September, I believe it starts right after Labor Day, so there would be a couple of weeks in August that they would actually be ramping up for the school year, so we would have the end of twenty-seventeen, the school is paying bill for that time. And then, and then we budget it for twenty-eighteen because it'd be the summer of twenty-eighteen that we'd have.
A new budget.
Correct. That's correct.
It'd be new dollars for eighteen, for the summer of eighteen.
Correct. Yes, correct.
Is this going to be a full-time position or just a thirty-two hour position?
Thirty-two hour a week position.
Excuse me, the school contract is for thirty-five hours, and so those extra hours are banked because it's a point, you know, point eight position through the county. So those hours that the school's paying for helps to cover some of the work that's being done in the summertime. Does that help?
It does. I just have hesitation right now approving additional new county dollars. I have no problem approving a contract with the schools right now, but because I can't see on paper what that new request would do to your budget, I'm hesitant about what that would do in the summer.
Yeah, the, and, you know, ideally, if we were able to have a position where it was just the school hours and the school time and just have a person do that, that would be great, but we don't have a position based on our benefit package. You know, we can't have a gap of those months in the summer where there's no hours for that person. So if the, if the person, in other words, it'd be less than, than a point eight position.
Well, could you, could you take the annual cost of the position if that's what the school district wants and just, you know, charge them the annual cost? And if they want to pay it over a nine-month period or a twelve-month period, you know, they can do it. But I, the fact of the matter is, you know, and as what Commissioner Mojo just said, you know, for, before we even get into the budget process, we'd basically be approving new, new dollars for public health when we haven't reviewed all of the requests yet that are coming in, that are going to, so at some point, there's going to have to be decisions made by what we can and can't do. And I think that's exactly what Commissioner Mojo is getting to, that right now, it's really early for us to say that we can commit to dollars, paying for extra dollars in the summertime starting in eighteen, because we haven't got through the budget point. But I want to go to your, back to your comment, so it's a thirty-five hour position.
Thirty-five hours per week, correct.
But, and, and so that's what the school district is paying is for thirty-five hours, but they're only going to, but they're a point eight, which is a thirty-two hour?
Correct.
So are they going to be working thirty, thirty-two hours or are they going to be working thirty-five hours?
They're going to be working thirty-five hours. And so each week, there will be the three extra hours, because they're only, you know, they're working the thirty-five hours in the school, but they're only a thirty-two hour a week position. So those three extra hours a week will be flex hours to be used during school out time. You know what I mean?
I think you said that backwards. Right, so they're working thirty-two, but the contract is for thirty-five, right? So there's three, three hours that they're not working, but it's being paid for. So then that three hours is banked and then used in the summer.
Yeah, the summer of the school out time, correct. Those three extra hours, correct.
Right, and I guess my concern is that a three hours really doesn't go that far. What's that get you, two weeks into the summer?
Well, it's, it'd be three hours a week times, you know, the fifty-two weeks.
Thirty-six weeks.
Yeah. This is the same.
You know, Kathy, I think, I think the, I think the issue here is, you know, we have a request from an outside agency wanting to have a service done by us, they should pay for that service. And, and that service means we either hire a nine-month nurse, which is going to be extremely hard to do, or you hire a twelve-month nurse and then that position is paid for by that entity who's requesting it.
And, and we talked about, I talked with Darren when we were working with another school district that has actually the same contract with the same hours, but just in our system, we can't do a nine-month nurse.
They could either continue their benefits contribution or pay for the pay, or, you know, we've done this before with some of the other nurses that we've had for the school district, and it's always been a challenge to defend that, that summer months that they're not in school.
Darren, we're going to prob, we should probably have you talking into a mic when we're doing this. There you can.
It's always been a struggle with the nurses because when, they're thirty-five weeks, thirty-five hours per week in school, but then, you know, they have Christmas break, spring breaks, summer, and so we're trying, we're always trying to figure out how do we accomplish that. And so I think with the other person that we had is a school nurse, we use those flex hours to kind of fill those gaps when they're working more but only getting paid at a point eight, but they're putting in flex hours so that over Christmas, they're still getting paid, they're still getting paycheck, and then they're still getting their appropriate county contribution as well. And I think that would carry them through the summer or most of the summer along with working in public health, it's during the summer for, I don't know how many hours per week that the other person worked during the summer. But that's, that's the issue that we've had with all the school nurses. I guess the other option would be to do like a, I, we don't like to do it, but we've done like soft terms before where they would be terminated throughout the summer months and then we'd rehire them for the summer.
Yeah, I don't, that's, that's messy.
Yeah, it's messy and I really don't like to do that because then it kind of messes up with their benefits and everything as well. So, yeah, I don't know if there's a great answer to all of it.
Well, I think.
Who else we have that arrangement with right now? Is it dealing with?
Yeah, but, but we may have, we may have that arrangement with them, but it was, it was worked out based on a budgeting process. And, and again, this, what we're talking about here is the piece that we're getting into and approving a two thousand and eighteen budget item before the budgets of everybody's presented to us.
I just have a question, and I apologize if I just don't have the background understanding. Why does a school need to contract with us for nursing services?
Well, the best school nurses are the public health nurses because it's beyond just dealing with, you know, individual illness, it's looking at the whole gamut. So in other words, what's going on with the child may certainly be an issue at home and that kind of thing. So they're really, we're able to provide a much broader comprehensive service at the school, and the schools appreciate the, that the school nurse is a public health nurse who knows all about the immunizations and all about his home situation, that kind of thing. So it's very challenging to hire a school nurse independent, plus there's a supervisor that they can rely on. So the school nurse, Jamie supervises school nurses, so the schools are accustomed to, there's always a supervisor that's a nurse that they can, you know, run things by.
So Kathy, why, when we have these requests, why can't we, why can't we just say to whoever it is, if you want a point eight person, this is where they fall on our grid. We know what that's going to be, we know, we know what we pay, we know what the benefits are, we know what the total package is. This, this, this is what it's going to cost, if this is your request for a point eight person, this is what it costs annually to do it. Why can't we just do that?
We can certainly have those discussions with the superintendent. I, I know they're always, you know, again, as a school district, they're always fighting for the dollars.
Well, so are we.
Yeah, well, exactly. But, and we've contracted with Holly again, part-time for years. Actually, we contract with all the rural schools. The Morehead School's higher independently, but they have a number of nurses that work through the school district.
Brian, did you have a comment?
Well, I do, and Mr. Chair, thank you. I reviewed this last evening or late yesterday afternoon, and I did send an email to Kathy because I had the same, very same questions that you're having. So, and we hadn't even discussed it, so I just felt that you may have some of those questions. What I would recommend, I have the same concern as you, we can't, I wouldn't like to see you approving new dollars for twenty-eighteen when we're just putting the budget together, but you could approve the position with the dollars of the grant, of the school grant. I, I think there's an equation that would work out here, that if we have X amount of dollars from this grant and we advertise such, and I'm sure the teachers have some kind of a formula where they, they're working nine, nine and a half months, but they're paid annually or monthly, aren't they, all year long? I would think that model would work, and that's what you're talking about here. So I think if you were to prove it utilizing the funds that are coming from, from the school system to work out a pay plan, I would think we could certainly work around that. I mean, we have to be flexible enough, and I'm looking at Darren now, we have to be flexible enough to make things work.
At least, at least that would, that would cover what they need and it's not putting us out there for new dollars at this point.
And they have to get this hiring process started if they're going to be ready for the, for the fall.
Correct.
So I think that would be a system, and then we could talk more about how this would, would lay out, and it would give them some, some approval to get going on it.
Darren, what do you think?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think that the county should incur more dollars, you know, to hire somebody for the school. If the school wants that person for nine months, then they should pay the salary of whatever we come up as it's going to be to include the benefits and all of that other stuff. So I don't think that the county should, just because the school wants a school nurse there, doesn't mean that the county should incur more funds going to, to that person.
And on that, then I think that as HR, we need to get creative so that we're not saying, well, that we just don't have something available, we can't make it work. Because as we're in constant committees trying to be creative about how we fill staffing gaps, you know, maybe we do need to go back to the table in our HR policies and see how we better accommodate.
But clearly, there are, you know, even, as Brian mentioned, even the teachers, you know, they, they have the summers off, and some of them, some of them have the option of getting paid so much for the months that they're working, or they can have the option of taking an over twelve-month period. We should be looking at something similar to that here, and I think that would probably solve that problem. But it has to be based on the dollars that's being received from, and I don't, I don't want to say just any one school district, but that should just, a request from an outside agency for our assistance in that matter, that's how it should be handled.
And when I did the wage calculator, I did it for not only the school year, but the full, or not for twenty-seventeen, just twenty-seventeen, but I did it for one full year, so we know what that cost is going to be for one full year. For a, I think it was a point eight position that I did it for. Yeah, so for a point eight position with county contribution and all of that, I have that number of how much it's going to cost.
So do you have, can you share that number with us?
Let's see, for one full year at a point eight starting out, and I just always started at step one.
Okay.
But you're looking at fifty-five thousand two hundred, and that would include twelve months of county contribution and a step increase after six months.
Okay, so, so for example, then, what, in the contract that we're looking at with the school district, what dollar amount were they talking about?
It was, let's see, one hundred and seventy-one hours, do you remember? It was a hundred, they just put the number of hours or the days in?
Hundred and seventy-five days.
I'm sorry, yeah, one hundred and seventy-five days. I can tell you in a second.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Historically, my experience in public health has been that there have been public health dollars that have gone towards supporting school nursing, and just to kind of, Kathy talked a little bit about that, but the, the community, public health serves the community, and it is a way for us to get to the community, example of just the measles outbreak that has been happening across the state. It helps public health to be more in touch with schools, so it's been a win-win for public health and the schools. So it's not uncommon across the state to see contracts where there's public health dollars supporting that. Doesn't mean you have to, but I'm just talking about the history behind this.
And we don't, and we, we don't, and we can't argue that point.
I understand.
But you also, we also are going to be looking at requests for needs for out-of-home placement, we're going to be looking for requests for additional jail staff coming up, starting next year. And all these things, we haven't even looked at those yet, and we would be adding dollars for this one before any of that.
Oh, I do understand.
And so is it fair to everybody?
Right.
That's, that's what I'm getting at, it's.
Sometimes it's helpful just to know the history, that's why I mentioned it.
Thank you.
So, so as far as what they're paying, we might be fairly close in already them paying almost the full-time position because we're counting the one hundred and seventy-five days, I'm going off my memory, but it's close to that, and they're paying our agency rate, not the, it's not divided between the salary of the nurses and the benefits, so it's the agency rate, which is a little bit higher. So if my calculation is right, we're close to fifty-five thousand, so I can verify that. So in other words, they would be paying, and that is all dependent upon the nurse that we get in. You know what I mean? If it's at step one that Darren determined, it may not be step one, however, if it's an intern nurse.
Well, whatever your agency rate is, that's what we should, and what they're willing to pay, that's what we should hire.
Yeah, yes, exactly. We use the agency rate versus the salary.
Right, includes everything, it's, right.
I mean, are we looking at utilizing this person at the county then, or just at the school?
Well.
Yeah, the extra days that's beyond, because of the benefit package, they have to fulfill that.
So she would be, she would be a year-round employee?
Yeah, and in the summer, it's not the full summer days, you know, there's not that many that's been accumulated. They've used a lot of that up in the nine or ten-month period at the school, so there's maybe twenty days in the summer that they would need to fill, depending on how many days they work during the school year. So it's variable. And, and like I said, we've done this with the other school contract and.
What's the board's wishes?
You know, I, I feel that this is an important service, I agree with you, it really is important in the schools. I don't like requests that don't have the dollar figure out what the, what the contract would be, what our county contribution would be. I can't approve something blindly like that. No, I would support a motion to go forward with the services starting in the fall, paid by the Holly District until the end of the school year, and hopefully, we could figure something out in the meantime to make sure that if you need those banked hours for the county later on, what does that, that, that benefits or pay package look like?
Sure.
For the position. But I, I don't have it in front of me, so I mean, I just.
Sure. Well, and Darren has kind of the breakout of the.
Yeah, we, we can get a more definitive, how many flex hours per year and where that'll be used during Christmas break, spring break.
Would you like to make that a motion?
We've done that before.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right. So that was a motion by Commissioner Mojo and a second by Commissioner Rayland. Any further discussion on the motion? Brian?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo made the motion?
Yes.
Okay, and second, okay.
Yeah, question then, well, you figured this out, you said after six months, it gets a raise. I mean, would Holly, Holly District cover this then too, that six-month raise?
Well, I think that would have to be in the contract of the total package of how much this person costs. I figured in the step increase of six months, hired at step one, goes to step two after six months.
Okay, it's all figured in there, fifty-five.
That would be a fifty-five, what I said, twenty-two hundred.
All right.
So I think that would be, have to be the full contract to cover this person.
So in essence, the motion is to go ahead and hire this person, which would take it through the next school year, which ends, would end next May or whatever, then we'd, at that time, we would end of May, we'd have to, or whenever the school year ends.
Well, I was not approving additional point eight dollars.
That's right. Okay, so any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, the same. Motion carried, so you can go ahead and start that process.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so next, Kathy, you have transition administrative support position.
And this is the, for a case aid position, another position that Jamie supervises. And as you can see, the workload has tremendously increased in our adult health program, where we're now serving over eight hundred clients. We have temporarily added someone, we have one case aid, one, one full-time case aid, and we've temporarily had to assist that case aid, it's, it's way over the amount that she can manage. We went from two health plans to four health plans, so now we would need the second full-time case aid to fulfill all of those requirements for the health plan. So they would divide up the health plans, one would take two and the other one would take the other two. So the work necessitates the need for that second full-time case aid to manage with all of the contracts we have with the health plans. So in this case, we have someone that has been temporarily assisting, and so there's a change in the grade, as you can see. The administrative support staff is on grade ten, the case aid is on grade twelve. There's not much of a, when we change, as I've worked with Darren, from, from the level that they're at, the step that they're at on grade ten to moving to grade twelve, it's a, it's a very small change in the salary. So there wouldn't be, and the case aid, as you have read, generates revenue, the administrative support staff does not, but working with the health plans, there's revenue that covers the case aid position. So we really need a full-time case aid. We only have one person within our department, the one person that had been filling in temporarily, there's two other people that don't qualify, and the third person is not interested at this time in that position, so that's the request, is to have the, a full-time case aid in order for them to keep up with the workload that's being generated.
So in other words, you're suggesting eliminating your support staff and?
Well, at, at this time, we would move her just into the case aid. I'm not requesting a replacement for that position as administrative support staff.
So you're, so you'd have a new person then?
We, what we do is move the person that's already had been temporarily filling, that person would move into that case aid, it wouldn't be an external hire.
So you would no longer have an administrative support staff?
Correct.
Okay, that's.
That's correct, yeah.
All right, Brian and Darren, have you reviewed this? Have either of you wanted to comment on?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I did visit with Darren just a little bit about this. I, we'd like you to, if you are so see-fit to approve the position, but I think we still have to have a little more discussion, Darren, on the union advertising of this position and filling the position and things. Is that still up for discussion?
Well, this position isn't, isn't union, but, you know, normally what we would do if, if we're, if we consider this a new position, we would normally open it up internal for people to apply and go through the process of, of selection. That's what we've done in the past before. We normally don't take somebody that's already an employee here and put them into a new position, a grade higher, without going through some selection process. Now, based on what Kathy was telling me, and we had a long discussion last Friday, I think, because two hours or so on this, that there might not be anybody that's interested or qualified for this position. So the selection process would be very easy because the one person that we're looking at would be selected for this position. But at least it opens it up as fairness-wise to say, is anybody else interested in this? Because I think the board would consider this a new position because right now, we have one case aid doing this, and she's requesting the second case aid. And the nice benefit of it is that you're not backfilling it with another administrative assistant, be the one that would be moving into the case aid position. So I guess it would be up to the board whether you want to allow Kathy to promote this person into a case aid position, or do we follow where we would open it up internally most likely and see if anybody else would be interested, so there is some competition for that position. And then if there is no competition, the selection process becomes very easy. The other thing that you have to look at is where this person is on the grid already and, you know, placement on the grid. Now Kathy can place this person in the grid at step one, but that's less than what she's making now, so why would somebody want to move there? So you would have to bring that, if you would approve it now or bring it back to the board to put her in appropriate step, it would be more than what she would be making now.
And I'm okay either way, whatever this board thinks is right.
Well, Brian?
Yeah, just, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, I, what I see is if you approve the position and then we will work with the process, I think we have an established process, we'll, should advertise internally and go through the process, and then we can work out the, the step and different things too, so that's where I see it going.
I, I really think that's the best way to go. I, you know, I, we have to honor all of our employees' ability to, if there's an opportunity for something to advance or whatever, I think we shouldn't just say that just this one person gets this opportunity.
Sure.
So I think if that's, if that's okay, then.
That's fine with me.
And the, you said that the, the dollars generate revenue and that's, comes through the state then, or is it federal?
Through the health plans.
Health plans, okay. All right. What's the board's wishes?
One second.
Okay, following the process as described today. Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried, and finally, we have a. And finally, we have a request for a project coordinator for the opioid prevention.
We applied for the opioid prevention grant through DHS, and we were awarded that grant. I have an email confirmation. We do not have a contract yet. But this is a quick turnaround time. They want us to begin August first. And this will, as I've stated, will be for a 21-month period, a full-time position. We have a project manager PDQ already, so we would utilize a PDQ. This would be a project manager to work full-time with, with our detox clients that have opioid use disorder. And they'd be working with the community as well. So we're requesting to, and the, and the grant again, fully supports the employee, all the benefits, and all of the, all of the other budgetary items that would go along with this position. We have up to about three hundred thousand. It's a 21-month period. And of course, as we always do, the employment is only based as long as the grant is in place. And we always hire employees with that understanding. We make that clear upfront that once the grant is complete, then the position would be ended as well. The, the contract will come later, as soon as they initiate that. We haven't received anything like that yet. But they wanted us to get the confirmation so we could move forward. The hiring process, I suspect, will take us some time because to find somebody that will want to work for 21 months and then have their job ended, I think might be challenging. So trying to, I anticipate that that might be, you know, a tough hired and also someone with experience working with opioid use disorders. So it might be a little bit challenging to find someone.
I'll make my approval for 21-month position.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, the same thing. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we're going to have our annual report from the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County. And we have with us Maureen and Mark Peal. We're going to have a recognition award here too, huh?
Okay.
Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us. I'm, I'm here to give our annual report to the county and also to say thank you very, very much for continued support from the county. We greatly appreciate that. Twenty sixteen was a challenging but successful year in the end. We had roads closed in several directions. We joked that you would have to rappel in from a helicopter to visit the museum. What we found is that visitors from out of town were quite persistent in getting to the museum. And the locals were the ones who would say, we're not, we're not going to bother this year. And so by the end of the year, however, I think we evened out pretty well. We did not lose as much admission income or attendance numbers as we had expected in spite of the roads being closed for the five months of our tourist season. And that is due, I think, in no small part to the small but mighty staff we have at the Historical Society. This is a hard-working group, and they persevered. It also has to do with the support of the city of Morehead and Clay County. Over six hundred members and donors and many granters, and of course, about 25,000 visitors a year. By the end of the year, we hadn't seen as much of a drop, about a thousand fewer visitors. Just to remind you, we have many changing visits, uh, many changing exhibits throughout the year. People tend to forget that we change exhibits every three to four months. So there is always something new to see, and you should come on over anytime you want. You can come on over and let me know that you're coming. I would love to take you around and show you. We opened in February of 2016, the major Clay County exhibit. A lot of effort goes into researching and writing the Clay County-focused history exhibit. This year, it was called Wet and Dry, and it was focused on the history of alcohol, primarily eighteen seventy-two?
Basically eighteen seventy-one to the end of prohibition.
There we go. And Clay County has its own unique and interesting story, believe me. It's, it's quite fascinating, and people have been coming in, in, in large numbers to see it. In particular, school groups have been coming in, although the fourth graders, it was decided that the fourth graders would not be coming through that exhibit. They are still coming to the museum for their history, other history lessons. But more of the high school, all of the high school students in the, in the region have been visiting the exhibit. What makes that possible too is all the grants that we receive. We have many, many projects, and the report outlines a lot of the special projects that we accomplished as the result of grants. Grant writing is my, the favorite part of my job. I love it. And I have about a ninety percent success rate. Between the Minnesota Historical Society and the Lake Reeds and Arts Council, we have eight opportunities to write for grants. So that's up to eighty thousand dollars. That can go a long way for our group. Community-wide, we began an initiative in 2013 to make all the arts and cultural facilities fully accessible to patrons with disabilities. We recently received the Arts Advocate Award for our work in the community, and we're continuing to help organize a systemic or systematic approach by educating the arts and culture leaders as to what accessibility is, what it takes to make your facility accessible, and what are some ways to, to make even your programming accessible as well. And so we'll continue working on that. Finances, you might take a look at the bottom line and see a great big number. And that, I have to explain, is because we were honored with a Margaret A. Cargill Philanthropies Grant at the end of the year. In November, we received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so that bottom line of a hundred and ninety is inflated quite a bit, makes us look real good. However, that is actually for a new project that takes place 2017, 2018, and 2019 called Viking Connection. And that is a project to preserve and pass on the Scandinavian folk arts of the Viking era, of the Old Norse era. And so that will be used to help us develop our Viking festival and also continue to teach actually throughout the Upper Midwest. So we'll be actually expanding our, our reach, at least marketing-wise, will be, come a little better known outside of the community. But that's going to be spent over the next three years. So we would have ended closer to forty thousand for our end of year, which was particularly successful given, given the early part of the year where we were really wondering what exactly we would do by the end of the year. However, our members came through and we had a very nice end of year push for donations. So it was an unusual year. We normally break even, but we had a little bit of a surplus this year. We appreciate the commission's, having Frank Gross as a commissioner on the board. He's a man of very few words, but when he does speak, they're insightful and helpful. And finally, I want to present Mark Peal, our senior archivist. He runs the Clay County Archives, which are free and open to the public. And I want, want you to know, we have hundreds, several hundred in-house visitors just to the researchers, to the archives every year. But then he also answers hundreds of emails and phone calls of people asking questions about this and that throughout the year. And I want to stress that his, his value as a resource to the community in terms in particular of the media, a lot of, I, I don't know. It doesn't seem like a week goes by without the media calling and saying, can you give us the context for this weather event or that particular criminal event? And he provides it not only for Clay County, but for the Fargo-Morehead area as well. And so on April 27th, the Minnesota Alliance of State and Local History awarded Mark Peal a Lifetime Achievement Award, and we brought that award to show you today. So, Mark?
Well, here it is. Perfectly good piece of walnut. And I deeply appreciate that coming from our peers. But I just wanted to thank the county commission for your support over the years. It's made it really possible for us to turn the county Historical Society into one of the best county Historical Societies in the state. Very proud to have been a part of that and deeply appreciate the county commission's support through some very difficult years over the past.
Well, congratulations, Mark, and you deserve it. And, and boy, I'll tell you what, your, your knowledge of the history of this region, and you know, it's just amazing when I read it. I, I shared with the board, we had a request from a young student regarding some historical information about Clay County, and I passed that on to Mark. And it was, it was completely answered really amazingly. And I, I thought, I, I thought maybe you would answer three or four of the questions for me, and I'd answer the rest. I didn't have to answer one. It was, this thing, this thing was done and it was sent off to the student. And I'm sure that he gave a really, ended up giving a really good report. But anyway, it's...
Great, thank you.
Congratulations, yes, yeah.
I too would say, you ever gone to one of his presentations? I mean, it's just, you're just odd at what happened in Clay County. And he doesn't have notes in front of him. He just tells you about it, you know, and it's just, the knowledge that you have there, Mark, is just tremendous. Appreciate what you do.
Well, thank you. I'm lucky and I've got the best job in Clay County.
So we were, we were going through this process of, with our new correctional facility here. And we ended up running into a couple of old tanks. And, and it was determined that they were probably from their previous hospital. That was apparently it faced Ninth Street as opposed...
Northwestern.
And I was, I was born in St. Ansgar's Hospital, and I always thought I was born in this one. But I am so old, I think I was born in that one. But I haven't been able, because, but it was right, the switch was right around that timeframe. And so I might have to, I might have to come and, come and visit with you and see, to get the exact, yeah. So anyway, thank you very much and congratulations. You're well deserved. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a public hearing, and this is an adoption of the resolution for capital improvement plan. And of course, this has an awful lot to do with our, our current law enforcement center project.
You get motion to open?
And we need a motion to open the hearing, yes. All right, we have a motion and a second. For, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, Brian, do you want to start that?
Well, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. And I'll, I'll start it out. I have with me today Shelley Eldridge from Ellers and Associates. She can certainly answer any questions that you have in regards to the process and the procedure. Although I think we've kept the board and the community pretty well informed as to what we're doing here. We are building a correctional facility, and we are also building a law enforcement center. The only reason why I say that is because right now, they are joined in the same building, and now they will be separate buildings. We have already sold bonds for the jail, and now we plan to sell bonds, or hopefully, with your approval, sell bonds for the law enforcement center. And what we published, or what, what Shelley published, was a notification that we were going to have this public hearing today for any input or discussion from the public and yourselves. I furnished you a capital improvement plan a couple of weeks ago for you to review. There's just one little change that, and it was just for clarification. I think it would still cover it well, but on page six of the capital improvement plan, after, it's, it's under the 2017 expenditures. And you'll see the amount of the sixteen million, eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And then it says, which includes architectural, engineering, land acquisition, parking. And parking is the word that we have asked to be inserted into the capital improvement plan because we wanted to make sure that we were covered on the parking elements of it because that is an important factor. I think it could be included in the project itself because you need parking, but just for clarity and for, for everybody's understanding. So, and what the capital improvement plan does, talk about the different things that it covers and the need for the facility. We've talked about that for months. We've published documents. We've gone to the legislature. So I don't know that we need to rehash all of those things today. But there's elements of the, of the capital improvement plan that, that need to be covered. And, you know, we've talked about the estimated schedule, the estimated cost of the capital improvement, the need for the improvements, and the source of revenues needed to pay for the improvements, and we've talked about that an awful lot as well. The, the bond that, the maximum bond that we've been talking about is sixteen million under this capital improvement plan. But we've also, your capital improvement plan can include a lot of different things. In other words, if you had roofs and parking lots and different things too, and you could list those. But you have chosen to keep this to the law enforcement center and the associated costs with it, because, just not to confuse things. And you've also put in the paper and talked about it not exceeding sixteen million dollars. It is our hopes, and we talked about it a little bit yesterday, Mr. Chair, and if you would want to say anything about that. We have been talking for now maybe a year and a half or two years that this second bond would be around fourteen-five. And we still haven't deviated from that, from all of the different things that have come up. We're still in that fourteen-five range, but we have sealed, put a ceiling on it of sixteen million to make sure to cover the tanks that, and the dirt, the extra dirt, and different things along those lines. But we're still sitting at that fourteen-five range, which is, to me, very satisfying. So with that, I would turn it over to Shelley, and if, if any comments or any questions that you may have, or anything that the board may have.
Good morning, Shelley.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. Brian pretty much covered it. If you, if you decide to proceed and adopt the resolution, that will trigger the thirty-day reverse referendum period. And then after that, at any time, then you can call for the sale of bonds up to sixteen million. It can, like Brian said, be less, but we can't go above that. This plan, it's a five-year plan, and it can be amended in the future if you determine that there's other things after the LEC that would need to be bonded for under the, under the law.
And that, that amendment process would require then a new hearing?
Yeah, yeah, exactly what we're doing now. It would just be for the additional, the additional projects and costs and bonds. And then that would also trigger an additional thirty days after that. So this is just for this. It's not for anything else, and it can be amended in the future.
I have a question. If we go for sixteen million, I'm just trying to see how these bonds work. Get my knowledge a little bit on this. If we go for sixteen million, do we pay interest on sixteen million, or we pay interest on what we use? Or is that a, I mean, do we?
Maybe, maybe if I can, I, I think, I think by the time we actually call for the bonds or buy the bonds, we're going to know the dollar amount that we need. So as Brian just mentioned, if it's fourteen point five million that we're going to need to pay everybody off, that's what the bond will be, and that's what we pay interest on. We don't pay it on the sixteen if we don't get sixteen. Okay.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. When you, after the thirty-day referendum period, and probably closer to the fall when the, when the project numbers are tightened up, then the bond will be determined, and then we'll go through the bond, bond process like we did before. We're, we'll come back to you with a pre-sale with the exact amount of the bonds that you'll be issuing. So then that, that's just like the other bonding processes we've gone through.
And Mr. Chair, it's resolution number twenty-one. That's, was not in your packet. The resolution is in your packet, but the number was not on it yet. So if you want that for simplicity...
It's 2017 dash twenty-one.
That's correct. That's correct.
All right, well, we'll get to that when we close the hearing. Do we have any other comments by the board or questions? And there's, I see there's no public here that's interested in commenting, so... Do you have a motion to close the hearing? Say a second, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. All right, so the hearing is closed, and we have before us the resolution that would be to approve the five-year capital improvement plan and authorizing additions of sale of general obligation bonds. And it's Resolution 2017-21.
Will we approve the resolution?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Dave, you're just in time. Even though you're one minute late.
For me, that's actually nine minutes early.
That's, yeah. He says that so proudly.
Could be 19, I guess.
All right. Good morning. We have a couple of things here for you this morning, and the first one is you're requesting final payment for the mill and overlay in Casatu.
Yeah. What we normally do is we get the contracts, put together, we go through all the items, we meet with our staff, and then we send these out to the contractor. And for some reason, it did take a little longer to get back from the contractor, but we finally did get it back. This one was with Central Specialties of Alexandria. It was just a simple milling overlay down by Barnesville. Original contract was just a little over a million, and it actually came in a little bit under on this one. A little bit less gravel shouldering, so it, about $34,000 or so, under the contract. We get approval on that one.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the final contract.
We have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carried. All right, Dave, next, we have a request to approve the second highest bidder, and we had a little, we had somebody who backed out, huh?
Yeah, apparently he had a little, a little, maybe buyer's remorse. He went through his numbers, he felt like he couldn't really make it work. There was a little bit of, a little questioning whether or not he'd be able to utilize the existing property the way he'd like. Right now, it is currently zoned residential, and, you know, we did disclose that in our paperwork. And we did also work with planning and zoning commission there in the city of Holly, and all they really requested was they wanted to know what the new use was going to be. So, I think they, they weren't saying that it couldn't be used for other things, but until they actually knew the uses, they wanted the new owners to come back. He might have had some different ideas on what he wanted to do with the building, so he did decline his initial bid. So, we talked a little bit at Highway Committee, and I've been working with Brian a little bit, and I think bid number two is still reasonable. There is a lot of specials on there. I think there's well over $20,000 of existing special assessments for water and sewer work in the city. So, even at 52,000, which is the bid number two, he's going to have over $70,000 into this property when he gets said and done. And I guess I feel in an effort to move forward, and, you know, one of the things I know that Brian mentioned is we really don't want additional county-owned property. Our mission was to try to minimize county-owned property, whether it be right-of-way alongside a roadway or a property. And I guess I wish the bid was a little higher, but it's still about 10,000 higher than bid number three.
Are they aware that they have to pay specials? I mean, that bidder number one or bidder number two, whichever?
Was that in the, I think we did close that as well.
Yep, we kind of gave out a little expense sheet to all the bidders, kind of showing our utility bills and specials and everything. I think it was 27,000 was the balance last year on the specials.
Has this bidder been contacted?
Yeah, Eric has had, yep, just to make sure exactly that we don't have a decline.
He's still willing to honor his bid, and he's, I think he's pretty excited, he wants to close on it as soon as he can. And he said the, I think he plans to use it just for storage, for like boats and personal stuff, so I don't think he's going to run into the zoning issue with the city in that regard, so.
So, this bidder number one loses?
Yeah, we had a $1,000 bid bond that went with it, and that check has been cashed, and is that correct, Jenny? I believe that would be forfeited.
They know that going into it, so.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Dave, you got anything else for us this morning?
No, I just, it looks like the parking lot out front is really...
Yeah, you're, thanks to your staff for being there, doing that for us. It's saving us a lot, I think, to have, have that done internally, so.
Won't be long, hopefully it'll be parked right out front again. Hopefully. It looks like we're done digging anyway. Anytime you're done digging, that's always a good thing.
All right, thank you.
You going to be around today? A couple of items at that time.
We have, we have five minutes before we can have this next public hearing, so maybe we can switch and do our break now, is that all right? All right, let's just take a five-minute break. How we, how we look back in the back, is he ready for us? Are you ready?
Thank you.
All right, so we'll reconvene here after our break, and we'll go into our public hearing for the approval of an ordinance authorizing the sales and use tax for Clay County. There's a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, good morning, Brian.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. This is pretty exciting to talk about this today, to tell you the truth. We're here at this public hearing today to talk about an ordinance to implement the one-half of 1% sales tax that was approved by our voters last fall, and also by the state legislature this last, well, this spring, just real recently. And I'm just going to kind of read through what you have in your packet, and I know you can read, but I think we'd like to go over this for the, for the public. It'll just take a few minutes. But at the general election held November 8, 2016, the voters of the county of Clay approved the imposition of a one-half of 1% sales tax, sales and use tax, to finance the capital and administrative costs of constructing and equipping a new correctional facility, law enforcement center, and related parking facilities, as described more fully in the county resolution dated December 22, 2016. The Minnesota Legislature has, by the law of the Minnesota, for the 90th Legislative 2017 First Special Session, Chapter 1, Article 5, Section 26, authorized the county of Clay to impose an additional sales and use tax within the county to finance the capital and administrative costs of constructing and equipping a new correctional facility, law enforcement center, and related parking facilities. Authorized expenses include, but are not limited to, paying design, development, and construction costs related to these facilities and improvements, and securing and paying debt services on bonds or other obligations issued to finance said facility, and shall also be used to pay the cost of collecting and administering said tax. The tax authorized by the Minnesota Legislature expires at the earlier of, and this is a 20-year tax, or if $52 million are collected earlier than that, you can choose to, to discontinue that tax, or when the county determines, as I just stated. So, that's about all I'm going to say on that, because then it goes into the definitions and different things. But this is something that the public is well aware of, they voted on it in the fall. You've been talking about it for a year and a half, two years, so the information is certainly out there. This is a procedural issue for now you to approve the ordinance. And I guess with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jenny Schmerager, Assistant County Attorney, who has just done the legal work on putting this together and framed it, and I just want to thank Jenny for all her help on this, and it's pretty exciting to get to this point.
It is, it's very exciting. Thank you for hearing this issue today. It is very exciting and very, I guess it's been a long time coming, so we should celebrate the fact that we're this close. But I know you guys all know that the, that the governor, by lack of action, did allow our Clay County tax and the accompanying legislation to pass into law at the end of May. And so, the actual Clay County section is Section 26 of those special, of those laws. At this point, it's not been codified yet, but it will be later on in the legislative process. And part of that specific language, which was the language that we supplied to start this process a year or so ago, indicated that once the, first the voters had to vote for it, second, the legislature had to pass it, and then the terms of the actual text of the bill say that the county must pass an ordinance. So, I know we've done a resolution, but the next technical thing in the, in the line of steps is to pass an ordinance. So, the ordinance you have in front of you, I believe it'll be 2017-1, Colleen and I were just talking about that, but I don't believe we've had another ordinance yet this year, but we'll double-check into that before we, before we file this. But it is modeled after, like, special or sales and use tax ordinances from mostly cities that we've seen. Fergus Falls was the one that I really used to model this ordinance on. And the language, for the most part, comes directly from our language that the legislature passed. So, some of the wording in that first page that Mr. Berg read, that's all verbatim from what was passed at the legislative level, so I didn't want to mess with that, I just kept it as is. And then it goes on to definitions, talking about the specific tax, the one-half, the one-half of one cent specifics and exemptions. It, in many places, talks about deferring the tax and the implementation of that to the Commissioner of Revenue. So, we turn over the power to collect that tax to the Commissioner of Revenue. We're not, we don't have any special authority for exemptions or so forth, but that all is Department of Revenue tax, tax code rules. So, there's, there's not a lot of unusual text within the ordinance. The Page 5 talks about, you know, the county and its licensing authority. If a business or a taxpayer would not be up to date on the taxes, they would not be eligible for licensure on a variety of different types of licenses, and that's, that's all pretty standard as well. So, unless there's questions on the actual tax type, I don't see anything too out of the ordinary, but it's, it is what is needed to start collecting the sales and use tax. And along with the ordinance, we need to do two other things as well. So, we need to pass the ordinance, that's number one. Number two, we need a certificate of approval to the Secretary of State, and Brian and I will finish that up after today's session. And then we also need a notification letter to the Commissioner of Revenue, and that has a few different things accompanying it, a copy of the ordinance, copy of the resolution that was passed previously, some minutes from this proceeding today, and the details of the referendum in question, the results of that referendum, and so forth. So, there's really three pieces today that we're asking for, for the agreement of this board, but the public hearing applies only to the county ordinance, and then we would take care to get those other things in line. There is a 90-day advance notice required, so we are on track to have this effective October 1, 2017, which was the anticipated effective date, and that's what's outlined in the ordinance as well, that this, if it's passed, this ordinance, and then we do the other technical pieces with the Secretary of State, Department of Revenue, it would go into effect October 1, 2017.
Any comments from the board or in the public hearing?
I think I asked this before, but my question was, what the form of the actual registration of the tax, the payment of the tax will come? Will it pop up on the state's sales tax website, then as just another line item that will add an extra 3.5% onto what is being taken at this point in time?
Yeah. I don't know if it'll be a separate line item, but it certainly will be included in that screen. I don't know how the state actually, you know, sets it out on their program, but it will be included. It won't be a separate process or a separate payment.
It'll be one, it'll be very simple the way it is right now.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Haney, when Commissioner Campbell and I met with Penny down at the Department of Revenue, she made it very specific that they are in control of how the tax is collected and processed, and how it applies to, we can't exempt things. I mean, then she went into, well, maybe you could, but she said, this is, this now becomes their responsibility to collect, and it's in the form, format. So, we can't really say specifically that, but I'm sure, I'm convinced that that's how it will be, just processed like it is with every other tax that you collect on it.
I'm sure there's going to be a local option deal on it, where you'll fill in your, you know, I think, you know, my experience with those, and I've dealt with them for, in three states for a number of years, that you put in your tax limit, and it just would calculate it, the state and the local tax, so.
I want to comment. I think it's pretty well spelled out that this is just pretty much for the construction of, no maintenance of the jail or anything like that. You know, we have to, I mean, we have to hire extra staff and stuff like that, and can't use any of that money for, for that purpose, huh?
Right, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gross, I think that's, that's absolutely correct. But remember, the, we're looking at about $52 million here, and this will collect, you know, over the 20-year period, we think, the minimum of 32 million. So, you've got a lot of room there just to pay off your debt on this, and this can all be used for the law enforcement center and the correctional facility.
I think, I think what, I think what Brian is saying is, over the 20-year period, we'll never collect enough to even pay for just the building itself.
That's right.
Oh, enough for the same.
So, so it won't, it won't be used for anything else other than the construction.
That's correct. And, and in time, though, if the sales tax increases, that may help reduce some of the other obligationals costs that you have, meaning levy dollars.
We got to close this session. I just want to make sure there's not any public, anybody from the public willing or wishing to speak? Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak during the public hearing? All right, seeing none, if there's no other questions, or we have a motion to close the hearing, is there a second? We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried, all right. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, and I'm going to ask for a, because this one, it looks like the ordinance requires a's and nays, so if we could have a roll call vote. Please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Haney?
Aye.
Motion?
Aye.
All right.
Motion carried by 0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, just the, the other two items that you mentioned, those are just internal administrative things that you don't need?
Yes, they would be administrative. We have talked about who would sign those. It does not need to be the board that signs those. One of the instructions indicates that the chief clerical officer of a local government unit must file with the Secretary of State the certificate. We also talked about maybe it would be our auditor treasurer, Ms. Johnson, but we will double-check with the Department of Revenue to make sure we get it right. We just so much want to make sure all these details are precise and correct, because there's a lot on the line.
You know what, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest here, just because I'm overly cautious of this, but I'm going to suggest that we have a motion that authorizes our administrator to file a certificate with the state.
And a notification letter to the Commissioner of Revenue.
And a notification letter, so if we could have that as a motion?
Solo.
Okay, we have a motion by Jim, second by Frank. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That's always the same motion, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and Jenny and I do plan to work on this this afternoon sometime, because we absolutely want to get this in today, because it's supposed to be in by the thirtieth of June, and we want a little extra few days, so we're being very cautious on it as well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is Child Support Fraud and Collections Program Update. We have Rhonda and Sandy here this morning.
Hi.
Good morning.
It's fun to come when I'm not asking for something.
Why you hear that?
I know. Okay, when I came and did my department update, I shared with you that we would, that I would have each of the units come and give you a little bit more detail about the work that they, they do. And so, Sandy's unit is the, the first one. Oh, we're going to be sharing with you some information about our Child Support Fraud and Collections Unit, so I'm going to just turn it right over to Sandy. Oh, totally forgot. You have the power points. Sorry. Well, we'll operate off the power points.
Okay. Okay, so, hi.
Good morning.
So, I supervise the Child Support Fraud and Collections Unit, and so, on, I believe it's the third slide, you'll see a picture of Social Services and all of the many people that work in Social Services. My unit is highlighted in red, so that you kind of know what we're dealing with there. So, the first area I was going to talk about is the Welfare Fraud Unit. We have two full-time welfare fraud investigators, and both positions are eligible for the Federal Financial Participation, the FFP, at fifty percent. The state is really pushing the front-end investigation, the FBI program, and that's to try and prevent fraud from happening. So, they're looking at early intervention, financial workers interviewing somebody, and it just doesn't sound quite right, so they'll have an investigator look at, you know, is this really what the household situation is? Are they working, that kind of thing, to try and stop a grant from going out ahead of time. That, that area, we get a grant from the state of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, or up to that amount, and that, in combination with the fifty percent FFP, funds a little over one position for our fraud area. So, we do the front-end investigations, we also do the back-end investigations, which would be the criminal fraud, so that's for cases where the money has already been given to a family, and then we find out it shouldn't have been. We're pretty aggressive here in Clay County with the criminal end, because we feel that the administrative disqualification hearing process through the state requires more information than a criminal matter would be, and we feel that if somebody is going to be committing fraud, then they should have that record following them as they are going from state to state. We also service Becker County in the front-end investigation area, so one of our investigators goes to Becker County as needed, at least once a week, to investigate allegations of front-end investigation there, and then also for interviewing people that they are just trying to gather information from, locating people, that kind of thing.
So, how do we work with Becker County? I mean...
That's through, that's through a state cooperative, cooperative agreement.
We just, I mean, if they, they must have a social services department there, too, don't they?
They do, but throughout the state, counties can apply to be a part of the FBI program that's funded by the state, and back in 2009, they looked at reorganizing that whole area, and there were three areas that were considered to be more underperforming, and so they consolidated those areas with other counties. So, they asked us to...
So, do we get some of the funds that should have went to Becker County, or?
Yes. Yeah, prior to that, we were getting, I believe it was either ninety-three or ninety-seven thousand, and it went up to one-twenty-five. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah. So, statistic-wise, for the FBI program, you can see that in Clay County, you know, we're, we're putting through a lot of referrals every year. Last year, we had three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, and that was a direct savings of a hundred and fifty thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars, that we prevented from going out to somebody that should not have received that, that grant. The way that they figure that is they multiply, apply it by three, because they figure it usually will take about three months to catch up to finding fraud in other ways. So, for cost avoidance, we prevented over four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from going out in the air. And then from that, they may have already received some grants, so there were overpayments of almost sixty thousand dollars that we now are trying to collect back.
Okay, but if the money never really went out, how do we say we saved the money?
We prevented it from going out. The whole point of the FBI program is preventing a grant from going out in the air. It's much harder to collect the money back than it is preventing it from going out in the first place.
I'm curious about how you get a lead on something like this. What form does that take?
Yeah, most of it would come from the financial workers, as they're meeting one-on-one with people going through applications, but we also get phone calls from people in the child support area. You know, we're interviewing somebody to establish paternity and find out that, oh, Dad's living in the home. You know, it, it comes from a lot of different sources. We even get some from social workers. There's a state fraud hotline, so somebody could call in anonymously, and that would get referred out to us, but the vast majority comes from the Income Maintenance Unit. Becker County, we, we don't receive a lot of referrals from them. It has kind of been declining steadily. They're trying to do more, more work on their own. They're much more aggressive at calling and trying to verify things without making that referral, but they have a new supervisor of the Income Maintenance Unit there, who is very willing to work with us, and I think is trying to encourage her staff to do more referrals to our, to Clay County, asking us to come and check things out. I think it also is changing, because the reservations, and a large part of Becker County is on the White Earth Reservation, they're taking over their own public assistance programs, so it's really cutting back a lot on the referrals that we're, we're receiving from Becker County, so we're kind of watching that to see what happens in the future as far as numbers and that kind of thing.
Sandy, can I ask a question here? On your overpayments, you're showing for 2016, fifty-nine thousand, seven-oh-three. Then you have overpayment totals on the next page, is that something different? For a hundred-and-eighty-two thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so, if I can stay on the fifty-nine thousand, so you say we're trying to collect that back, so is that like fraudulent?
What do you mean fraudulent?
Did they get, so did they get this stuff by fraudently?
Yes.
So, all of those become criminal?
Not necessarily. We have a criteria that we follow for what we're going to consider to be a criminal. If it was like one month, and it was a grant of four-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, that would not be a criminal referral.
Okay. So, and even on the cost avoidance, so in other words, there was four-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars worth of applicant requests that deemed to be not qualifying?
Correct.
So, but maybe they don't know, so is that why it's not criminal, some don't know that they?
No, it's, it's just the, the way we've determined how we're going to refer things. In, if it's over five hundred dollars, we would consider it. Five hundred to nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars would be referred as a gross misdemeanor, and a thousand dollars and up would be considered to be a felony. But a lot of these are smaller, because we're catching them quickly.
So, all of these, there's, there's definitely an error on their part in the application?
Yes. For, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now, some of the overpayments, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sandy, we have had overpayments, and it's been worker error, too, and we, we quickly try to resurrect that as well. Many of these programs are quite complicated, and they're interpreting different pay stubs and various things, and sometimes we make mistakes, and so we issue benefits, and it, it might have been an error. So, that's a piece that contributes to overpayments as well, as well as false reporting of various things, so that does play into it a bit as well.
Yeah, but worker error wouldn't be reflected in the fraud area.
Here.
It's going to be reflected later in the collections area.
Right, okay.
Okay, then, with the criminal and the administrative disqualification, those statistics, we are down a bit on our referrals. We're adjusting to changes on how the overpayments are being calculated, so we had a little delay there, and we're trying hard to get that going. We've also had changes with our attorney, a couple different attorneys, so I think we're kind of back on track now, and hopefully that will be reflected in our next year's status. But as a result of the criminal hearings, last year, we had a hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, one forty-four, that was calculated as overpayments, and then a court ordered for reimbursement. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I say, you know, when I, I do child support work, I don't do the criminal side of it that's reflected here, but when I go to child support-type trainings or conferences, we are very aggressive in our criminal referrals and success rates. I have people from other counties that comment, "Oh, I don't remember the last time I had one of those cases," and we do that very frequently, so, I mean, kudos to all the, the individuals that work towards that end and, and help us recover, I mean, a hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars just last year. I know that's not necessarily all recovered, but it is court-ordered, and there's a means to recover it, which is the first step, that's all we can hope for, so. So, yeah, kudos to everyone that works on these cases, and we are quite exceptional in the state.
Mr. Wilson?
So, do you actually get that one-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand back?
We work really hard to try and get that back, yeah. There's many different ways, if there's still an assistance, sometimes depending on what program they're getting.
But that's how much you actually got back last year? That one-eighty-two?
No, that's, that's how much it's...
That's ordered, but you don't, yeah, so.
We're working for it. Then, moving on to our collections unit, we have two full-time collections officers, so they work on collecting outstanding debts that are owed to various departments throughout the, the county, and then they work on the fraud collections as well. These two positions are also eligible for the fifty percent FFP, and so they're working with the public assistance, they work with detox, we do the short-term foster care through the collections area, the Highway Department can refer things over, we do the probate, environmental health, and county burial. So, they have a lot of different areas that they're working with, and use, you know, all the remedies available to them to try and collect money back for either the county, the federal government, or the state.
How does the Highway Department do that?
Every once in a while, they'll have different things that they do, and I'm not real clear on exact, I don't know if it's like, if they move for somebody, then, you know, they're trying to get the money back.
It's been pretty weird.
But, yeah, it's been a long time since we've had a Highway Department referral, but there was nowhere else for it to go when we had one, so we got it. So, if, if we have a child in placement who's getting social security benefits, the collection officer will ask it, act as the personal representative for that child, and then be able to get the social security redirected to help pay for the placement. We work on enforcing probate cases where we have a preferred claim, and that's changing quite a lot now with what's happening at the state level with the new computer system for applying for, for medical assistance. So, we're not really sure, we're watching for how that's going to affect our claims, but it is changing quite a lot there, but that is very detailed work that they're doing to try and, and collect back if possible. They do a lot of skip tracing, trying to locate people, because they're not always, they don't always stay here. And then we also can file revenue recapture claims, so we can try and offset Minnesota tax returns to pay off debt. And then they also do several things for the child support unit, like the buckle swabs for paternity testing, driver's license judgments, those types of things. So, then, our collection statistics on mandated programs. So, these are the programs that Social Services has to provide, but we're trying to get some of it back, so we have to spend the money, but we're trying to offset some of that cost. So, this isn't budgeted money for, like detox, you know, we have to spend the money on detox, that type of thing. So, we are working hard there again, trying to collect money back. A lot of the balance that you see there, which is pretty high, is stuff that's been out there for many years, but it hasn't met our write-off criteria yet, so, you know, once it does, that amount might be adjusted, but we're adding to it all the time, so, you know, just...
Yeah, and this is that area we had conversations about over the last probably three years when we developed the debt write-off policy, and the real clarity to this is, these are programs we're mandated to provide, so we don't budget necessarily receiving all this revenue. We do a little bit based on our history, but, but nevertheless, we make every effort we can to collect when we, for those services when we can.
So, in the instance of 2016, where you have a total, where it says amount collected, four-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, that, that could have been from things seventeen years ago, or six years ago, and finally you got the, they finally had the resources to pay them, or whatever. So, so, but in your, in your budget, you, you never showed revenues, or forecast revenues of four-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand?
We do not.
Yeah.
No.
So, that, at the end, in the end, that kind of helps your bottom line, and here like this, where you had heavy collections.
Yeah, and a little bit we do, we look at, so for example, in out-of-home placements, the, the foster care area, we look at our history of being able to collect primarily social security for kids, and if we see kind of an average trend, we will consider that, but we don't, we don't budget the whole amount that we're trying to collect. So, we do, we do plan on a little of it, but not in entirety.
Then, moving on to the child support area. In that area, we have six child support officers and five support enforcement aides, and we are mandated to provide certain services, like locating people, establishing parentage, court orders for basic support, medical support, and childcare support. We enforce those, those orders, we review and modify them if necessary, we work to enforce across states and sometimes country lines, and then we collect and process payments to families. This area is eligible for FFP at sixty-six percent, and then we also get incentives from both the federal and state governments to help fund the program. fund the program. We work to earn incentives based on performance measures that are laid out by both the federal and state government. In federal fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, we received one hundred and sixty-four thousand, four ninety-four in federal incentives and just over twenty thousand from state incentives to help fund the program for Clay County. My next slide just shows some federal performance measures for some like-sized counties, including Becker because they're right next door. Just kinda showing caseload size, where we're at with percentages and comparison to other counties and our cost effectiveness.
And that cost effectiveness ratio of five dollars and six cents really is saying for every dollar we spend in our child support unit, that's the amount that is returned based on those child support collections and money out to kids in our county, which is really impressive. Right? Did I say that right?
Pretty much, yeah. Okay. And then just some updates of what we've done in the past year or so and what's coming. We upgraded application extenders so that we're more efficient with the mail distribution. So now our workers no longer get paper mail, they get everything online and pull it out of a document box and are able to be much more efficient with how they're processing their work. And then also, Clay County was a pilot county for e-filing with court administration and last July, it went statewide, so we hosted a demo and had about sixty people from northern counties come to see how we did the process and to kinda show them how you work in that system. So that was kinda fun for our staff to be able to share what we had figured out and learned and all of that. There are a couple of things that are high on our agenda for watching, and one would be the impact of the Affordable Care Act on MA recoveries for our probate cases. Looks like there will be a lot of changes that will reduce the amount that we're entitled to in those cases. And we're hoping that possibly by sometime next month, we'll be able to process some of our first cases that have been on hold for a few years, or for a year, to see how that works for us and what amounts we might be looking at. Then also in the welfare fraud area, they've got a new computer system that they've developed that should be pushed out any time. And the child support system has been chosen to be the next program to upgrade their whole system using the CUREM base, which is what was used for the Mincher system. And that starts in October this year. So I'm hoping that with many years of experience that I have on my staff, that we will be able to be involved in helping to create something that will work really well for the future.
I remember when the Mincher system first came out, the computer system was a mess. I hope they've improved that if we're gonna be going to it.
My hope is, that, you know, child support has many, many federally mandated things. It has to be automated, it has to do, you know, so many different things that they're gonna have to really up their game on what their system can do and that will benefit all of the other systems coming down the road.
And I'd just like to comment, Sandy's unit has been, the longevity that she has in her unit is incredible. When you think about turnover in human services, it's quite high, but not in Sandy's unit. And I think that really speaks to her leadership. Our child support fraud and collections unit, I think, is seen as a leader across the state and Sandy's been out there on statewide initiatives and our staff have been on regional committees trying to influence the work in this area. And so I'm just really proud of the work of our unit and I think Sandy's leadership really speaks to that, so kudos. Thank you to you. Makes my job easier.
Very nice, yeah. Thank you for your report this morning.
Yeah, and we're gonna be coming back next week because Sandy had one of her first retirements in a long time notifications, so she'll have been turnover, but it's been a long time.
Seven years since I've had a new person!
Wow, you are fortunate to get that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you!
Alright, next, we're, boy, we're back right on time here. We'll move into our discussion regarding buffer program jurisdiction and as we know, our county board has to make a decision by, I believe it's next week at this time, and we've invited some folks here this morning to visit with us and, and I guess, Brian, I'd like to invite them all to come up and we can maybe get some additional chairs. Jerry and Tim, I asked Tim to join us too here as our planner, but Kevin and all you guys that wanna come up, just come on up and we're interested in your agencies and what your thoughts are on this buffer program and hopefully you can help us in making our decision. Yeah, we got enough?
We got enough.
Alright. And maybe we can start off with, just do some introductions here if we could. We'll, we'll start to my left there with Tim. Do you wanna just, let's just go on and you can all identify who you are for us.
Tim Agnes, Clay County Planning.
Kevin Kastenberg, Clay S W C D Manager.
Red Shaw, Clay S W C D.
Richard Menel, Clay County.
SW C P.
Okay.
Jerry Van Amber, Buffalo River Watershed District. I guess I'm wearing another hat today, too, probably Bowser as well, so.
Okay, you're, yeah, you're part of Bowser. Okay, very good. Alright, so, you know, we, as a county, we haven't, we basically have an option to either enforce this or let the state do it and certainly from the discussions we, as a county, have had, we would certainly prefer to do it than have the state of Minnesota do it. And we were then also looking at different options available to us, whether it be watershed or soil and water, to maybe participate, help us participate in that. As you probably are aware, this year, Clay County is gonna be awarded a hundred, I think it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars towards this project and next year I think it goes to two hundred, two hundred thousand. And I think the first couple of years are probably where the most effort's gonna be in this, to establish these buffer zones. And, you know, and the dilemma that we had with the watersheds is that we've already got one watershed who's, who's told us they're not interested. I think in our previous discussions with the Buffalo, I think they may have been willing to help us in this regard. But when you have one watershed doing it and one not doing it, that, we want it uniform. I think this is, we as a board have also discussed that. And so then we, we had the discussion, well, soil and water covers the whole county and we didn't know, we hadn't heard what the, what your board thought of doing this. There is another option that, that I think would be out there for us, would be to have the county actually be the one to do it, but then, you know, and maybe through our planning department to sub, do some of the, have some of the work done that's, that's needed to do it, not necessarily, and I think what everybody's afraid of is the enforcement piece. And soil and water, I think I heard that through Commissioner Mojo, that maybe that was a concern about the, about the enforcement piece, you don't really wanna be involved with that. But there are some aspects that maybe, maybe we can have some dialogue to see what areas, could you assist the county or would you, with soil and water, for example, be interested in being just the agency that this is given total charge of? So with that, I would open it up, unless I have the board members...
I just have a really quick comment. First of all, I appreciate the fact that we are able to have these different entities at the table to come to a conclusion that will most positively benefit our landowners, right? I think we wanna, clearly the Buffalo Red has a niche and has been doing great things and SWCD has a great relationship with landowners and what we are trying to do is, is not circumvent those relationships by any means, but what we are trying to do is retain local, local power in local jurisdictions. So as we continue to figure out who best figure this out, know that, that our board really appreciates what you're doing, but also appreciates the fact that we can come to a conclusion that will retain local org leadership.
Okay. I guess my concern is, is the state, have they got some set rules yet that we can go by? Have we wanna do enforcement? I mean, are they ready to do that, to back us up on enforcement?
Well, I, you know, to be honest with you, Frank, in terms of the enforcement, I think that's, you know, they've set the criteria of what, what buffer zones need to be done. And that, and that has been the big concern about all the counties, is the enforcement piece. And, you know, if, the last thing we as a county wanna do is have our landowner suing us. And so, so hopefully we can work, that's where I would like to see our, the expertise that you guys have is even just help us with these landowners. That's what you're good at in doing that, to help. I mean, there's rules that are established by the state, they're not our rules, but there are rules established by the state and we've gotta see them through and then, and we got a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to do it. You know, I, you know, one lawsuit could take care of that, but, but Tim, I don't know if you wanna...
Well, I was at a workshop a couple of weeks ago and, you know, there was a discussion about the buffer laws, buffer requirements. The majority of counties, I think, are gonna take it on, but I don't think the majority of counties are gonna deal with it on their own. Most of them are gonna bring the SWCDs and Watershed Districts into play, if not just act as pass-through for funding two of those jurisdictions. Watershed and SWCDs are parties that know all of these water courses. I mean, they're, they're in the field all the time. They're way more familiar with it and have a much better horror with property owners right now. Alright, most of them, but anyway, they're, they're the ones that are out there, I mean, they're in the field all the time. So I, I think counties are looking at the dollars and saying, "We can't pass up the money." But most of them aren't taking it in as a straight, straight-up county function either in their environmental services or...
Tim, I would disagree a little bit there about, you know, we're doing it for the money. I think we're doing it, as Commissioner Mojo said, for the local control.
Why?
I think that's, that's...
I think that's it.
That's the primary.
But it's one of those things where if you've got a hundred and sixty to two hundred thousand dollars available to you...
Right.
That can only help.
Right.
So yeah, they're not doing it strictly for the money, but if it's there and they can work with those, what the other agencies can work with.
For soil and water, you know, we, we had, Jerry was here a couple of months ago and we're, we had a dialogue with Jerry and Bruce from, from the watershed and I think there was, there was certainly some willingness from their part to be involved with this and, and I, and I think what you said, Tim, might end up, what we might be doing here is the county doing this and maybe subletting some of that out, whether it's to the watershed or the soil and water, both, you know, different aspects of it, but that's what we need to hear from you. So I'd like to hear from, from Jerry and then maybe Kevin and you guys from soil and water and what your thoughts are on this.
Well, you know, there, there are a number of models, I think, that are being used around the state. And I think Tim's right, that most of the counties are gonna take it on now and assume the authority anyway, the responsibility, to see that the ditches in public waters are in compliance. The drainage ditches, the jurisdictional drainage ditches that the Buffalo Red has jurisdiction over or manages, I should say, is not quite so worrisome now because they don't come in until next year, really, in two thousand, two thousand and eighteen. Public waters, that's a little sooner than some are gonna be happening. But the ditches, I think in Becker and in Otter, Otter Tail does their own thing, we don't have Otter Tail ditches, we have Becker and we have Wilkin. And a decision has been made there that, from what I know anyway, that they want the watershed to go ahead and take the ditches. And I think they're turning it over. Wilkin's, I think it's the environmental services, part of Wilkin's gonna do the other and in Becker, I think it's the SWCD. So that's, that's pretty common around, I think, around the state to have it done in that way. As far as Wild Rice is concerned, I know that John Jasky talked to Kevin yesterday up there again in a call and their vote was closer than I would have thought, maybe four to three or something like that.
Yeah, that's what we heard this morning.
They may rethink that, you may get, may get them yet. We'll see. But as far as Bowser's concerned, you know, we, we definitely would, speaking for them, would want to see the counties have the, the authority rather than having it go back to the state because, and I think in many cases, the landowners are really demanding that in many counties. They say, "Ah, we don't want the state involved."
Sure.
I can understand why they, why they wouldn't. But Watershed is, is ready, you know, as far as the ditches in our, in Clay County, we are planning on buffering those at any rate at some time. This just kinda steps up maybe the timetable a little bit. We, we won't be looking for an APO, I don't believe, at all. We'll simply be using our rules and the one oh three E statute in order to get those buffers put into place. So I, I think that's a really very workable model if, if, can't speak to the SWCDs, but if that's something that they're willing to do, I think it would work very smoothly in Clay County. We work well with the SWCDs, they're, they're our partners.
Who in the watershed would do it then? I mean, I know you got directors here and I know you got, I think, a couple of secretaries in your office, but who in the watershed would do the enforcement then? Would the directors do it or...
Well, it'd be, it'd fall on the board ultimately. Now, the, you know, we check the ditches every year anyway, they're looked at all the time for weed control, for other matters. We have people that are employed, not by us, but through Houston, that does the checking on the ditches.
Oh, okay.
Eric Jones is our engineer, he wouldn't be doing the checking, but Wade, 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 what's his last name? Yeah, would be the person that would probably be out checking in the field, very possibly. But it would fall on the board as far as, you know, making the rules stick.
Kevin?
I guess I'll, unless you guys wanna chime in and do so, but, you know, we really haven't come to a consensus as far as what the SWCD wants to do in this case. I think it's fairly new to us that, that it may be brought to us to enforce the whole county and with Wild Rice not taking that jurisdictional role, I feel like whoever is gonna do it, the county may be taking that as well. I, I'm not gonna say no because I can't speak for my board, we really haven't entertained that idea. But we're, you know, we're directed through this law, basically, we ought to meet with the landlords and to try to work with them upfront, get these water courses, wetlands. I guess the ditches, we haven't conceded very much yet, probably, because they have another year before they have to be planted. But we're working daily with these individuals out there right now, so I mean, I can see where the, the, an easy shift of responsibilities to us out there working with the landlords. So far, we've got a pretty good rapport with most of them out there to, for us to be out there and basically kinda say, "You're in compliance." Our hopes are that we don't get anybody to go through the violation aspect of things. We don't wanna bring Jenny into the picture if we don't have to over there. Maybe we wanna get involved and we can just as soon stay out. But, you know, most of the time, we try to work with the landlords, one, two, three times, let's, you know, we wanna work with you to keep you, get you into compliance or you're not out of compliance. So like I say, I've talked a little bit with Randy here, I have talked a whole lot with Richard, but we did bring it up at the board meeting, our last board meeting, which was earlier this month before a lot of this kinda came to a head. And, you know, with this June second notice that came out, basically forcing your hands and the Watershed District to make a decision by June twenty-eighth if you wanna take advantage of these fiscal year twenty eighteen dollars, you need to make a decision by the twenty-eighth of next week. So I, I think that ultimately to have local control, I think that's what we would like to see. The landlords that we deal with would rather see that as well. I think anything that you guys decide here before the twenty-eighth is, if you wanna accept or not, we can work out with you after the fact. I don't think anything has to be decided today, but I think, I'll just speak for you guys.
Well, yeah, I'd like to hear...
We want to work with you guys, so go ahead.
No, I, I agree with that, we don't have to make a decision who gets what control today, as long as we're integrating as a group that we should take it over, and then as time goes on, we'll delegate who does what. I think that would be the easiest solution right now.
And soil and water, from, from your standpoint, as a board, board member there, you're, you're open to taking on some of the work that would go into doing this?
I agree with.
Feel the same way?
Totally.
Okay, very good.
There's all different aspects of the buffer law that still needs to be.
Yeah, and I.
It's a, no, it doesn't really.
Right, and I, and I, you know, I, you know, I sit here as somebody who doesn't know a lot about it, other than the fact that I know that there's so many rods or something in certain areas that you have to, you know, and, and is that all identified already? I don't even know that in Clay County, so.
The nice thing is, most of its under compliance already.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
Not a lot that has to go.
Okay. Well, you know, I, you know, I think maybe, you know, the discussion we need to have here, so I think what I'm hearing from you guys is you would, you'd like to say, county, let's take this over, and then we can work out some sort of MOU or something with each of your agencies, depending on what work you can do, and, and part of, so that the dollars that we have available, you know, for the costs that you incurred during that, you know, we might be able to shift some of that. And Tim, some, some would probably fall onto you and your department then, as the, you know, blending it all together to, so, what do you, what do you think?
Have you, and I suspect, I suspect Brian has seen this, and maybe you all have the resolution that's applied to the counties that can use something like that if they want to, for adopting the.
Yeah, and we'll, we're going to, we're going to look at, we have next Tuesday to do that, right?
Yeah, we have, Mr. Chair, we have some templates, and we have Becker counties.
Becker counties, we think it's very similar, and our Bowser Board, conservationist Brett already had a work with, with the Becker County staff and commissioners to advise the resolution. It sounds like if you accept the responsibility and you want to include the wild rice, as far as we see that, that has to be included in that resolution, whoever, whoever you guys want to do that.
So if we're going to, for example, if we take the responsibility as a county, and we sublet out some of the work to the Buffalo Red River Water, to the wild rice, and soil and water, do, do those agencies have to be listed in the resolution?
Well, I think, doesn't the Buffalo Red have to make a decision? If you want to take jurisdiction on your public benches, you need to make a resolution.
We have, we have to, we have to make a resolution accepting the, or taking the authority on the, on the ditches. And then, the number of miles of ditches has to be sent, that's sent in to Bowser, I think it has been already, has been sent in by, by the district, and other districts. And what they will do then is come back to the county and say, all right, this much of $160,000 should go to this group for their work on that many mile of ditches. This will go to the SWCD, if that's the case, for what they're doing in public waters. And in our case, I think in the county here, it's like 20, 28 or something percent, would probably be ditches, and the rest of it would be public waters.
Okay.
I think that's the way it's split up. It's a little, a little lower than, than in some of the other counties, but that's, I think that's the way it is.
Good morning, Bruce. You, you know, if you'd like to come up, we're, we're kind of, we're kind of.
Bruce is here, Bruce can go there.
Grab one of those, grab a chair and come up here, and I, I know, Bruce, I, I had mentioned earlier that, that our, our board has been in dialogue with, with your group, you know, and there, and obviously there was a willingness on the part of the Buffalo Red to, to be involved with this, and we were thankful and appreciate that. But it's just a matter now of, we're down to by next, next week, we as a county have to state, do we want to have the county do it, or, or let the state do it? And we were, we were brought all of you in today for dialogue, and hoping to get your thoughts and insights and recommendations to us as a board, what should we do? I don't think we, as a county and county staff, have the knowledge and the ability, ability to do it all without your help, I think is probably the best way to state it. And I, all these gentlemen here today, Bruce, have said that, yes, that they agree with that, and think that they'd be willing to participate with us in, in getting this done. And if you want to add any, your thoughts to that.
Well, I think you're on the right track here, we'd be happy to work with Brian. You know, when we met before, of course, we were questioning what was Wild Rice going to do, and now we know that decision.
Right.
So we have to proceed ahead, I think, as you've probably already discussed this morning, it makes sense that, I think that the jurisdiction resides within the county. I mean, we have an option, of course, we can let the Board of Water and Soil Resources take it over. I think we lose our flexibility, I think we lose our services to our constituents, I think we lose the ability to work with our residents in this regard, if Bowser picks it up. I think you're correct, and the important decision right now is that the county lets the Board of Water and Soil Resources know, if that is your decision, that we're going to somehow or another find a way to take over this enforcement authority. The details of that, and the sidebar agreements, or joint powers agreements, or whatever we work out with the Clay SWCD, or Buffalo Red, or the watershed district, A, I don't think Bowser's concerned about that, nor do they need to know it. That's between us.
That, that was, that was my number one question today. So, so come next week, the answer that we can give the state is, Clay County's going to take this on.
Except that, well.
We're going to.
The watershed will have a resolution, as Jerry indicated.
Right.
For the ditches in Buffalo Red, Clay County will have a resolution for the streams, rivers, lakes, and ditches in wild rice, and then we'll figure out, six weeks, a month from now, or whatever, who's going to assume what in that regard, but we will have ensured then, or locked in, that the money, et cetera, will be coming to Clay County.
And, oh, go ahead, Jim.
And that was just my biggest concern, because we are dealing with three different boards, by the time that happens, SWCD's not having another meeting, do you have a meeting on Monday?
We, we meet Monday night.
Monday, so do we need to take action, so that you can go forward in signing your resolution?
And then we'll figure out the, the details of who's doing what down the road, but we'll met the state's requirements in terms of deadlines, et cetera.
I, I think ideally, what, you know, what we should do here is, is our board should respond that we're going to take this over, and then I, I think the, I think maybe Frank and Jenny, maybe the two of you being involved with the watershed boards and the SWCD can, can maybe work together and continue the, which agency's going to do what, what would our planning department do, what would soil and water do, what would Buffalo do? Those things you can work on together, I think, to come up with, with a plan, that doesn't be, need to be done by next Tuesday, right? So, so, but we, and then you have, you do have to do your own resolution on the ditches, right?
Monday night, we'll do that, we'll do that. But, you know, ultimately, we will have to, and the county will have to let Bowser know how they are going to enforce compliance. That, that has to be on paper sometime, that's down the road.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and that's something that, you know, we can discuss and work out, and I, I would imagine at some point.
Well, and two.
Our county attorney's office might get busy.
Our, we have to enforce compliance in other areas with landowners, so it's not something that we're reinventing a wheel, we just have to cater it to what the Buffalo, or the, the buffer piece is.
Do we have to send something, I mean, I'm probably getting out ahead of them, do we have to send something that these are compliance, Randy says, most of us are, most of the ditches are compliance already? So what do we, send something into the state saying, okay, now we're 100% compliant? And after that, what is, is just watch that no one approaches on that, or?
You are correct, Commissioner Gross, we will have to follow up with reports, and, you know, and if someone gets out of compliance, and it's going to be a, a joint effort of all of us here in Clay County, and as you mentioned, the county attorney's office, for the worst of the worst, if there is a case where someone isn't in compliance, won't work with us, the county attorney could implement, but only the county attorney's office can do that, the watershed can't, the SWCD can't, so we're all going to be in this together, and I think it, it shouldn't be that big of a deal.
Could I, could I maybe suggest something that, moving forward to get some of that, and again, I, I'd like to see Frank and Commissioner Mojo, on behalf of the county, work to organize this thing, and maybe if each of your boards could get a person or two that we, where you can meet, to, to work out the details that we ultimately need to work out on this, and, and then maybe Tim, as our, as our planning, could also be involved with that. But I think that'd be a good way to start, to, so that we can, we, we want to make sure we're on the same page with each of your entities, too, and what, what part is your expertise, what part are you willing to do, which part would you just as soon stay away from, so that we know that upfront, so we know who's going to do what. Is that, is that a, is that a fair plan?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, I would imagine we have to incorporate all that into an ordinance, and clarify everybody's roles and responsibilities in terms of process and procedure. I mean, everything else that we monitor and/or enforce comes from an ordinance power, and then that delineates the process for issuing either administrative citation, or, you know, we have to go into all those specifics, but I mean, that's where I hear this going.
I'm glad you just, you know, just.
Volunteer.
Volunteer yourself to be part of this group.
I know, I did write my name down now, so, yeah, I'm here to help.
So, so then I think it would be appropriate that, that you, when you can, to be involved with the same group, that can give them guidance in, in what would have to be drafted for an ordinance, so that would be great.
I know Bowser's supposedly coming up with some sample, yeah, a draft.
They've got draft ordinances all ready to go.
Right. And there is, there is some more flexibility in that apparently than what your ordinance could be, or maybe something in place, so the idea is to, I guess, take a look at that APO and see how it fits the buffer law, maybe that would fit for this situation.
I want you to start somewhere.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Very good. All right, well, I, anybody else have any other comments? All right, so it sounds like we're trying to have a, have a plan.
You hear from us, Bruce, about, you know, we feel you going forward on Monday, taking over the ditches is what our hope is.
I think it'll roll real smoothly once we get over the beginning.
Right, yeah, and that, and I, I think that's, I think that's the point why there was, the dollars established for this year, and, and even more next year, because I understand that those first couple of years are going to be the bulk of things to get things done, so, well, I, that's good, I'm glad. And then maybe when you know who you have, we can come up with somebody who, whether it's our commissioners or whatever, who can make sure these meetings happen, and come to some sort of, all right? Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, and then Brian Berg, I think, maybe between you and, and our county attorney's office, can, can we review and have the appropriate resolution for next Tuesday to, to move forward? All right? We, we have left is our committee reports. Commissioner Whalen, would you like to go?
Um, yeah, that's fine. I just, let's see, I had the area agency on aging land of the dance in the sky, we had our meeting in Moorhead yesterday, and nothing real substantial there. We had our, you know, financial reports, and we're, we're working on our new nutritional contracts, again, they're coming due, which is always pretty significant, and staff reports, and there's always some really interesting reports, a lot of, a lot of good things being done to assist the elderly in our entire region, and that was it for me.
You had the Greater Fargo-Edc meeting.
Oh, yeah, let's see, I forgot my book, so I didn't want to, you know, I'm old, so, I, yeah, that's right, we had.
These are accountable.
Yeah. We did have the Greater Fargo-Edc meeting last week, and we had a executive committee meeting prior to the board meeting, and just general business conducted there, and then we had a fairly lengthy presentation, you know, on a program that they actually are, are doing in, on the North Dakota side, working where the Edc is assisting and working with kids, and, you know, maybe that was about it, so.
Commissioner Mojo?
Thanks. Last week, I, our behavioral health for the law enforcement center, or the new correctional facility, decided to branch off and have some more in-depth dialogue in regards to the mental health servicing contracts with Lakeland that we have, and how they could maybe work, you didn't miss the meeting, Frank, it was just a subcommittee, how it would maybe work with the new, new building, and it was really helpful to clarify what psychiatrists need, and what training levels we currently do contract, as we're adding to increase, and try to save dollars. I was interested in how that all works, so it was good to clarify that. I think between Lakeland and Rhonda, we've got a good dialogue about adding that. We did also have the juvenile detention from, we have Steve Larson sit in on that, because it's kind of the same contract needs that are between those two facilities, so we talked about if we were to increase in one and the other, could we then drop to a different pay tier? So it, it was good, I think. We also did talk about the location of the mobile mental health crisis response, that a lot of time law enforcement officers are readily using, and if it would be helpful to co-locate that within the county, county campus somewhere, so that was, that was good. After we had that meeting, I had a meeting with Lakeland, quick to talk a little bit about the county, county budgets that are being request, requested Rhonda feels confident about the number that that is. After that, I went out to Highway, there was a buffer strip presentation on implementation with the SWCD and the watershed, and basically covered all of the pieces that we talked about earlier. And I really do think, like I said earlier, the collaboration between the different entities is going to be key in making that as smooth as possible. I had MetroCog last week, it was a shorter meeting, just talked about the 13th Avenue corridor study, that they were able to identify a consultant, and the piece, they're doing an RFP for auditing and their accounting, and we're looking for one of the entities to have someone look that over, so I did give that to Lori, she'll go over that proposal and make sure that everything looks good there. And I fielded some calls and concerns on that Lake 15 property issue, it's not seeming to resolve itself, but I, I feel it's been pretty thoroughly vetted from the county perspective, and there are a lot of different agencies that, that have issues with that, but I think that from the county's perspective, we've really, really looked at that fairly, so that concludes our reports.
I was.
You were out.
I was out last week.
Mighty Waters, huh? Commissioner Gross?
Yeah, I went to the Wild Rice Watershed District, and I guess the main, because now it's there as in the buffer, which we discussed, plenty right here, there's no use going into that anymore, but, again, the Wild Rice Watershed Board voted not to do any of the enforcement of it, so, but, I mean, it was a four to three vote, so there are, are some members that are interested in that. That was on Wednesday, Friday, went to the District Four meeting, down Fergus Falls. It's interesting to see that out of 11 counties that are in District Four, when we give the reports, that the majority of them have already decided to do the enforcement of the buffer. I think we're one of the last ones almost to do that, you know, so most of the counties are going, taking over the enforcement of it, you know, and then, and we talked, did a little discussion on audits, and that the counties can do their own audits. Becker County sort of indicated that they saved their own $30,000 by doing their own audits, you know, I don't know, hopefully they're just as good as what the state does, or better, I don't know. And then MCIT gave an update under insurance, and I think they're doing a pretty good job right now, there, it looks like we're going to get some dividends back again this year, so.
Okay. Right, I had last week, I, was that? Yes, thank you. Last week, I also was at the Greater Fargo-Merit Economic Development meeting, and I think the, the main topic was the presentation that was done, and it was a collaboration between the Fargo Public, Fargo and West Fargo Public Schools and the universities, where they're sending kids to, it's almost like a day on campus type of thing, to encourage all youth to have a commitment to go to higher education, and there's even a 529 plan out there that.
And there's even a, a five twenty-nine plan out there that, uh, allows for, uh, people to put money into a, a college fund. And, um, so we'll see how that develops, and, and I always am interested to see what, what's good over there that we can maybe apply to our side of the river as well, so. Um, then I also did attend the AMC District Meeting, um, and I think Commissioner Gross gave a pretty good recap on that. Uh, the, um, the issue on the auditors, of course, that, uh, that there was an appeal that was done and this, and the counties won that, uh, but now apparently it's going to be an appeal to the Supreme Court, so I don't think it's quite over yet, but... Uh, and then, um, yesterday, we, uh, we had a subcommittee meeting that, uh, met to discuss some, uh, long-term, uh, planning for the regional juvenile detention center. And, um, as you're aware, uh, we, we have a, another meeting that's scheduled for noon today. We're, Commissioner Wayland and I are meeting with a couple of Cass County Commissioners to look at some long-term, um, options there, uh, to see where, where their interest lies in moving into a long-term relationship with us on, on that facility. And that's all that I have. Brian?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, real briefly, um, I'll just mention the Board of Adjustments, you all attended that as well, and, and, um, I had a couple of comments on that this morning, I thought it went really well, you only had six appeals on it, and, um, I think that speaks well of the, of the, of the staff that are out there meeting with people, thanks, so. Commissioner Campbell already mentioned the meeting we had yesterday in regards to the juvenile project. Had a central administration managers' meeting with the central administration, um, supervisors. I attended, I also attended the AMC District Four meeting, and just maybe comment on that since Becker County asked me to comment on the dollars that they had spent. Yeah, it was, it went from about sixty-five to thirty-five, um, but, um, you know, they may have been happy with it, the state may have not been happy with the audit. We have always taken the position here that we enjoy the relationship we have with the state auditor's office and, and the audits that they do, and... You know, there's more information during the year, we, we seek out the auditor's office, the state office, office every once in a while for some advice and guidance on, on certain things, so I, uh, we may pay a premium price, but, um, we feel we get good service from them as well. So, um, that's been kind of our position that I've shared from your comments. Uh, working with Joe on the sprinkler system for the, for the campus, you know, there's a lot of work being done here, and, um, uh, I guess you're, yeah, I think you're all kind of looking at it when you come in, or you can look at it on site and, and are seeing that there's lots of movement going around, and, and we talked a little bit about the parking lot, but then we've got to sprinkle those two, so we'll bring, bring you something before you on that. Um, working with Brad and Eric from the Highway Department this week, or last week, since the meeting in regards to the additional soils and, and, uh, some, a little bit of delay there that's been taking place. And we have a meeting at noon that was, I think Mr. Campbell mentioned about further discussion on the juvenile project, so, um, I think with that, that's about it.
Thank you.
I, I just, maybe just to, uh, follow up to our buffer discussion, I think maybe it would be appropriate for us to, um... We kind of established a new little group here to meet, and I think it would be nice to get a resolution authorizing Frank and, uh, Commissioner Gross and Mojo to serve on, um, called a buffer committee for establishment of a, of a necessary ordinance, and so, um, I would certainly entertain that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose the same motion, period. Brian?
And one additional thing, Mr. Chair, and you mentioned it just now, I had many conversations about the buffer zone last, last week with Kevin and, and the watersheds and things, so, uh, I was glad to see you guys is on that same thought process that we've all been discussing, so... And Jenny and I, or Commissioner Mojo and I had communicated a few times about it too, because she had been in contact with Soil and Water and the, uh, the Buffalo Red, so it was good to have her insight and input in regards to-
I think we'll get a good coordinated effort to do this stuff, so.
Very good.
I do have one thing I wanted to report. Last week, I was lucky enough to go to the National District Attorneys Association Executive Course Training in Washington, D.C., so thank you for allowing me to go, and also thank you to my, uh, department, the Attorney's Department, for, for allowing me to do that. It was a really, um, awesome experience, training that ran the gamut from leadership to budgeting to, um, diversity in the workplace, employment law, um, a lot of really good topics, and that's a top-notch, um, association, and some fabulous presenters, so, and happened to be in the nation's capital, which is just a great place to be, um, to witness all that's going on there, uh, at this time. So, I just want to report that it was quite an experience, and I, I'm going to benefit, I think, from that experience going forward.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, just, she, Jenny shared with me this morning that she was at the Capitol the morning of that shooting at the, uh, the representative-
Yeah, I happened to be at the Capitol that day for a Capitol tour when Representative Scalise was shot, and, um, to see that security really being, you know, in, put into place, that level of security, uh, no time did I feel unsafe, or, I mean, it was, it was a very good experience. Uh, and we were lucky enough to go to the House session, uh, where Representative Ryan addressed the full house and, and made a pretty inspirational speech, and then we were also able to go to, two days later, the Congressional Baseball Game. So, uh, we got to experience that whole, uh, that whole thing, and, and like I said, it was just a tremendous experience, so, uh, very positive.
Please. All right, very good, we're adjourned.